All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call to order the Blair County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. I would ask that all of you join me, please, in a moment of silent reflection. If you'd please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic religious saints, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
We have no one joining us via phone today.
Executive session announcement.
There are two. The first was held on Friday, May 17th, at 1:30 PM with Commissioner Kessling, Commissioner Burke, HR Manager Melina Kegler, Chief Clerk Nicole Heminger. This was to discuss one employee discipline matter. And the second was held today, Tuesday, May 21st, at 11:00 AM with the three commissioners regarding land acquisition.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for 5:14:24.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Public comment?
I noticed on your agenda, you don't have opioid money settlement, and you said last week you were going to discuss it, so I was missing out. I just wondered if you were pushing it back or anything.
We were going to do it for Thursday, but all the commissioners won't be here for that meeting, so we're going to hold off until all three commissioners can be here because we think it's important. Commissioner comments?
I do not have a comment.
Okay.
You have all three commissioners.
Okay, I'm going to proclamation Emergency Medical Services Week for May 19th through May 24th. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the member of the emergency services medical team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week and recognize the theme for the 50th anniversary of EMS Week, which is honoring our past, forging our future, and encouraging the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Newly adopted, the Commissioners, County of Blair, Pennsylvania, 21st day, 2024, I'll ask for a motion for the proclamation.
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the proclamation.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Do you want Mark to say anything?
Yeah. Mark, do you want to say anything or not? I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
No, that's okay. We should all be very, very proud of the EMS Week. We have four companies. We have three major agencies that have always been able to come to the meetings. Their career departments have done an amazing job. Think of that, I believe they handled 30,000 emergencies last year. That doesn't mean it was different, but things that they face with them doing well. We also have a group of QRS first responders that are mostly volunteers, but sometimes are the first ones there and sort of do some things. It's really a big team, but they should be.
Thank you. Allison, if you could take us through the consent agenda, please.
Sure. Consent agenda for your consideration today is Resolution 243. It is the payment of the following three warrant lists is outlined in Item A. Ratification of the following nine warrant lists is outlined in Item B. Ratification of total payroll for the check dated 5/17/24 and the total amount of $883,231.65 in Item C. Budget transfer in Item D. And resignations, employments, and a status change in E, F, and G respectively.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
I am an aye with the exception of a payment to Blair Senior Services in the amount of $808.92 and a payment to McLeod Glasgow in the amount of $3,079.38.
Staff reports and special business. Ray, Ben.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Ray.
So I'm asking today, we had put out bid notifications for contracting services for removal and transport of our decedents in addition to storage of our decedents, two separate bids. We did receive on May 17th, two contractors that bid on both those bid opportunities. I would ask that the board accept the bids as presented and granting permission to move them forward on to legal review to make sure that they meet the bid specification.
I'll make a motion to approve that. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions of the coroner?
Just to clarify where the motion is, to accept the bids?
Accept the bids.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Public safety, you don't look like Chris, but.
Good afternoon. Requesting approval of the contract agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of Department of Emergency Services, E911, and Compliance Associates, Inc., for the hazardous material emergency preparedness transcare project to provide a countywide tabletop and functional exercise specializing in the transportation of hazardous materials by roadway in 2024. This is covered, the total was $8,200. It's covered by our HMEP grant for 6560 and the balance picked up by LAPC at 1640. We've done railroad exercises the last two years. This one's going to be a highway incident.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Compliance Associates for the hazardous material emergency preparedness project and functional exercise. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? You just did one for Norfolk Southern, correct?
That was a special event that Norfolk Southern brought their safety train in. We were able to work with the Altoona Hazmat Team, Logan Town Ship Fire Departments. We also brought the Alpha Hazardous Material Team down. It was a great experience. Everybody did very, very well.
First time it's ever happened.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone thought it was valuable.
It was.
Great. All right. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Better make sure it passes.
Thank you. Children, youth, and families.
Hello. We're just requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Agreement for Payment of Legal Services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Larry Leschinsky Esquire, Attorney of Ray Ray and Leschinsky, to provide guardian ad litem services for July 1st, 24th through June 30th, 24th, at the rate of 85 an hour.
May I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I moved.
I'll second the motion. Any comments or questions?
I was just going to check, I don't think it's actually guardian ad litem services.
I don't either. I didn't put that in there, but.
Because guardian ad items are a set monthly amount, so I believe it's actually as an additional attorney for a time.
I agree.
So it's just worded wrong on the agenda.
So you use other legal firms. This is just the only one, right?
This is not the only one now, no.
Right. Okay. That makes sense. All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fort Roberto, Glenn.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Glenn.
I have three items for you consideration today. First, requesting approval of a quote from Altoona Soft Water to provide water treatment service at Fort Roberto for the period of May through October 2024, our tour season in the estimated amount of $1,025.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any comments or questions of Glenn? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The second item is requesting approval of the submission of the Rotary Club of Altoona. They have a great-for-goods fund allocation application. It's an annual thing that they do, and we're requesting amount of $2,500 to support the printing cost of Fort Roberto trail and recreational maps. And we have a new one this year. I just want to share real quick, thanks to grant, GIS. It's on historic, it'll look like it's on historic parchment paper to help celebrate our 50th anniversary as an historic site.
Okay. That's cool.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. And the third item is requesting approval of two holding tank inspections, forms received from the Blair County Sanitary Administrative Committee for the 2024 annual inspection fees for our two holding tanks at Fort Roberto in the total amount of $80 for $40 each.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any comments or questions? Are these the newer bathrooms that they had?
Yes, these are the outdoor restrooms that came from the grant, and they have to be pumped, and so they get inspected once a year.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Public defender.
And as you all know, for the first time, Pennsylvania is now providing some money directly from the state for indigent defense. We were allocated $97,000, and it was up to the county to determine how that money would be distributed. I, with the help of all the commissioners, was able to come up with a request for how to utilize that grant money. Application must be made by this Thursday, so we're really under the gun. Do you want me to get into the laying out how it's all divided up?
I think you should.
Okay. So first, I'll start with the easy ones. We are allocating about $45,056, or proposing allocating $45,056.91 to go towards conflict council compensation. Currently, we pay a flat rate for certain appearances, certain types of cases, and my understanding is that may be changing, but no matter what, we are not paying our conflict council as much as surrounding counties, and so this will help the county pay for that. We're proposing that about $8,000 go to Justice Tech Software. It's a software technology that will transcribe body cam. We get thousands of hours of body camera footage every year, and this is something that will really help our office efficiently be able to review and, well, basically just review all of that information. We're also asking for $8,000 as retention incentives for our full-time staff. Our non-union, more than 10, or non-union staff who've spent more than 10 years in office, we're asking for a $2,500 bonus, essentially. There's two eligible staff members for that bonus. For union, more than four years with our office, we're asking for a $1,350 bonus. There are two eligible staff members for that. And then for union, less than one year with our office, a $300 bonus. The reason we're asking to do it this way is we understand that the commissioners may have some concerns about this funding continuing. The governor has indicated that he plans to continue funding indigent defense, but constructed as a bonus as opposed to a raise doesn't put the county on the hook should that funding not come through for following years. We also are requesting an allocation of $23,530 about for a part-time investigator. Our office does not currently have an investigator, leaving all investigative activities to the assigned attorneys themselves. That would create a base pay rate of $21.82 an hour in the H16 pay grade for about 999 hours a year. There would be no retirement contributions from the county, so there are no benefits because it's a part-time position. We're also asking for, this is where the math gets tricky, an allocation of about $10,412 for a legal assistant. It would be a full-time position. We would eliminate the current full-time administrative support position and create a full-time legal assistant position with a base pay rate of $17.10 an hour full-time at the H11 pay grade plus retirement. The difference, so the difference between the current staff position, the full-time legal administrative support position, and our proposed legal assistant position is So that's how much will be coming out of the grant. It's important to note on this that this grant money can't be used to supplant any existing funding, so in order for us to be able to get this money, we can't reduce the amount the county is already contributing for certain things, so that's why I'm proposing it in this way, so that we make sure we're not supplanting any funding. And then finally, a $2,000 recruitment incentive for that legal assistant hiring. Again, that's a way to basically increase compensation for that position without putting the county on the hook should our funding not continue going forward. We were given only a few weeks to come up with a plan for this money, but I think it's critically important, and hopefully it's just a small, a small portion of where it's headed that would take some of the pressure off the counties to provide its constitutionally required representation.
So I'll make a motion to approve. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
I have just a couple of comments. I think my understanding from a webinar that CCAP provided was that should any of the money not be able to be used by the county the way that we've set forth today, we'd be able to submit an amendment for different approved uses. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, and PCCD is, it's very important to them that the counties get this money and are able to use this money, so I anticipate, there may be a whole process for it, but I anticipate us being able to amend our request should that come up.
And the reason I ask that is that obviously some of the requests specifically related to salary and new positions still have to achieve approval by Salary Board, and to the extent they affect union positions have to be discussed with the union. So I just wanted to clarify that for everyone, that this isn't a done deal, that this is, you know, exactly what's going to happen. It's what we are proposing and going to ask the state to do. Correct.
And I would like to thank and applaud you for being creative with this grant. We truly appreciate, because that was one of my big concerns, was we don't want to be held to require, to be making this increased salary over the next several years if this funding goes away. So I thank you for your creativity and coming up with a way to do that that fits within our guidelines and our budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia, how many, how many cases per year does a public defender's office, I mean, actually defend?
So I don't have that number on hand. I know historically it's been towards about 3,000. It's much more surprising than you would think to actually assess that, because there's a lot of things that we do that are outside just a criminal case docket number. We do probation revocation hearings, we do mental health and voluntary commitment hearings, PFA contends, various other, you know, bail hearings, bench warrants that aren't captured when you just look at case numbers, but it is, it is quite a lot. As you know, we are a Class 5 county, but our crime statistics mirror that of some high-volume fast-core counties, so it, it makes, it makes our resources stretch pretty thin.
I actually can offer some comment on that. Public Defender Montgomery, Chief Montgomery had provided me with statistics last year, I think. These are going back to 2018, 2019, and 2020, but in those three years that we, that the public defender's office handled about 60% of all criminal cases that were filed here, and obviously that doesn't include some of the hearings and things that you're mentioning. And I also did want to point out that that conflict council compensation, which was the first item that Attorney Burke mentioned, is something that is budgeted for cases where the public defender, you know, the person qualifies for a public defender, but our public defender office has a conflict and cannot represent them. So in these cases where we see lots of co-defendants, we often have to bring in private attorneys that we pay to do that work. So that budget, I know the courts had asked for a large increase in the budget, and we have consistently had to transfer additional money in because we have not been able to fund that fully. So I think that is a really important item in this request, because that would ensure that we can continue to provide those conflict counsel, and I, you mentioned a potential change to the way those are budgeted, because we do them as a flat rate, and it's not based on the amount of work the attorneys actually have to do. So this funding can help us move toward, hopefully, making that a more equitable situation in terms of the work those attorneys are performing and making sure they're compensated.
You know, just say it's, you know, on behalf of the public defender's office, we, we believe all indigent defendants have the right to effective assistance of counsel, and so I'm glad that we were able to come up with a scheme that will afford that much that's going into that portion of it, because oftentimes that's a sort of forgotten aspect of indigent defense. It's not just the public defender's office. We need to make sure that our conflict counsel has adequate resources as well.
I'm glad that, I think we're all glad that the government, the governor has made this a priority and is giving the money, but you sit on this board, don't you?
I'm on the committee. The indigent defense.
You're on the committee. So when you were on the committee, if I remember correctly, just so others understand, you didn't expect the governor to say, you have a very compressed time, and you have to, you know, you have to find ways to use this money, or?
Yes. I don't think I'm saying anything inappropriate. We, this was a very short period of time. We met for the first time, I believe it was February 12th, something around there. And yeah, we had to put this together extremely fast. PCCD did a great deal of the work discussing what this money would even be allocated towards, what it would go to, or what the possible things it could go to. We kept it very broad, because every, every county in the Commonwealth is very different, and their needs are very different, and so we wanted to make sure it was something that each county knows best what they need. But then, once that funding announcement was made, the counties themselves only had a few weeks to figure out what they were going to do with it. And so this is, I think the best, I could come up with it within that period of time, but we have every expectation that this funding will continue. The governor's pledged $10 million for next year, so hopefully this is just the start of a continuing commitment from the Commonwealth.
Well, I think it'd be nice for you, the public defender, to actually have an investigator to help people as well as your legal assistants, so.
I mean, anytime we could get our attorneys doing legal work, and that's even with the legal assistant position, that's what we're trying to do. There's a lot of work that just because of the size of our office, the attorneys are responsible for, but you don't really need a lawyer to do it, and so what we'd like to do is free up our attorneys to actually do the legal parts of the case and delegate the rest to others.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Allison.
So I have two items. The first is just a simple request to approve or approval of a facility use agreement between the County of Blair and Green Hill Township for the use of the Claysburg Community Senior Center. And this is just to hold a public town hall that will be advertised in the mirror soon.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
And second item is requesting approval of the settlement agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of Blair County Children, Youth, and Families and the Department of Human Services for the purpose of resolving the county's appeal of the license revocation for a 24-month period pending the term set forth in the agreement.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any old business? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question about the opioid settlement? I was told it was supposed to be discussed today, because you said that you weren't all here, but now you're all here. When is it going to be discussed? Because I did call the office twice, and now you're not called back.
So we were, I don't know that it was ever supposed to be discussed today. It was Thursday, next, this coming Thursday, and this coming Thursday, we, all of us will not be here. So we need to send it out, or do another public announcement to do that, because we think it's important that all three of us are here to answer any questions and to explain what we're going to do with that money, or what we propose to do with that money.
And you're still not willing to have some sort of a table setting of people that have been directly affected with actual victims who are going to just decide?
No, that's something we're going to discuss at the, at the meeting.
No, there's been no decision made on what that, what I will say is that we, the commissioners, had the opportunity and a privilege to attend a CCAP seminar, I guess it was.
Symposium.
Symposium, and it discussed the opioid settlement funding and what other counties have done to approach this particular subject. I think I can say for the board, I know for myself, that I found that to be very informative. It's, you know, it's a lot of money, and we need to make sure that we utilize that money wisely. So, you know, again, I think that all of us left that symposium with a better idea of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. So, but to your question, there's no decision's been made yet on that.
So what was submitted or asked for new information on it for probation officers?
I'm sorry, but.
When you guys submitted to have probation officers' salaries paid, do you now know that that's not something that was supposed to?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I said, no decision's been made.
But that's what was submitted.
I don't know what was submitted, because it's the last time I wasn't here. I will say it's an appropriate use of the monies as outlined, so it can be used for that. If we're going to use it for that, I don't, I can't tell you that now, because we haven't discussed it.
So I think, to answer your question, there are certain things that we have put in the allocation for that. I think that went to the trust, which met the day after our symposium, and then we received questions back that we had to answer on whether we were approved to use it for that use. So as far as I know, that's not a done deal, but I think that's separate and apart from having an additional public meeting where we discuss for the rest of the money, or if they say we can't use it for what we've told them we want to, what are we going to do? Are we going to have a committee that, what such has been, has been suggested, and what's the process going to be for that? So that's, there is, even if we are approved to do what we already said we were going to, there's still additional several hundred thousand dollars to be spent.
Right, I'm aware of that. I was at that trust meeting the next day, and what I got from the committee is the salaries for probation is not appropriate, and that is wrong.
That's not something that we have been told. My knowledge, at least. I don't know if either of you have other information. I understand they came, they had some questions to follow up the finance director's working on. That's all I know.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held, or it won't be held?
No, well, the 30th is the stronghold.
Okay, Thursday, May 30th at 1:00 PM. Thank you.